The meeting now in order. As the past president, I'm required to list the names of the holdover members of the board, which are Mrs. Byts, Mr. Raskin, and myself. And then, before I go on, Mr. Kurtz is on his way. He's in traffic on 422, so as soon as he gets here, he'll get here. Is there a motion to appoint Lawrence Small as the secretary pro tem for the reorganization meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wolf, seconded by Mr. Tardowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
May I oppose? Mr. Small?
Purpose of this meeting is for the reorganization of the Daniel Boone Area School District Board of Education pursuant to Section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code.
Is there a phone? You can't have your phones by.
Purpose of this meeting is for the reorganization of the Daniel Boone Area School District Board of Education pursuant to Section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code.
Nominations are open for a temporary board president. From the holdover members of the board, Mrs. Byts, Mr. Martino, or Mr. Raskin. How would you like to be temporary president?
Sure.
I nominate Mrs. Byts.
That was for secretary, no?
No, this is for temporary board president.
Are we allowed to second it, or only?
You're not even on the board.
You're supposed to read the whole thing so they don't.
No, it doesn't need a second, it's just need to be, Carol.
It does not need a motion or a second.
So I move that we close the nominations?
I think he's just talking to himself.
All those in favor? Mr. Raskin, and myself, Mrs. Byts, you're now the temporary president.
Okay. Where's my script?
Here's your mic.
Just keep it moving, that's the only thing you need to do.
What do I do? The blue, start with the blue, please. Start with number seven, and you're going to read aloud the election certificates. You're going to read them in order. Can you put your mic on, yeah, please? The County Board of Elections of Berks County does hereby certify that as a result of the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015 in the county of Berks, that Brian Doty was duly elected to the office of Daniel Boone Area School District Region Three, school director, for a four-year term. The County Board of Elections of Berks County does hereby certify that as a result of the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015 in the county of Berks, that Connor J. Kurtz was duly elected to the office of Daniel Boone Area School District Region One, school director, for a term of four years. The County Board of Elections of Berks County does hereby certify that as a result of the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015 in the county of Berks, that Dane A. Ocaso-Neal was duly elected to the office of Daniel Boone Area School District Region Two, school director, for a term of four years. County Board of Elections of Berks County does hereby certify that as a result of the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015 in the county of Berks, that Jeffrey C. Scott was duly elected to the office of Daniel Boone Area School District Region Two, school director, for a term of four years. County Board of Elections of Berks County does hereby certify that as a result of the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015 in the county of Berks, that Tamara Deed Twardowski was duly elected to the office of Daniel Boone Area School District Region Three, school director, for a term of two years. The County Board of Elections of Berks County does hereby certify that as a result of the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015 in the county of Berks, that Michael Wolfe was duly elected to the office of Daniel Boone Area School District Region Three, school director, for a term of four years. You're going to ask all the new board members to stand, and the holdover board members to stand? Will all the holdover board members stand? And the new school board members stand? Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
You're going to read the names in blue for the record. And number eight. This is the announcement of the Daniel Boone School Board Directors, number eight. The following are the Daniel Boone Area School District School Board of Directors. Connor Kurtz, Region One. Richard Martino, Region One. David Raskin, Region One. Carol Byts, Region Two. Dana Ocaso-Neal, Region Two. Jeffrey Scott, Region Two. Brian Doty, Region Three. Tamara Twardowski, Region Three. Michael Wolfe, Region Three.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now, you're going to start with the election of the board president. Okay, so now, we are going to elect a new president, because I am truly not. You're going to read that. Okay, just so they understand what we're doing. As we begin nominations, I would like to explain the procedure. You will be asked for nominations for a specific position. You will then nominate a person. We do not need a second. We do need a first and a second to close the nomination. There can be more than one nomination for a position. The first nomination will be asked for a roll call vote. If this is the person you would like to vote for, you will answer yes. If not, answer no. It must be a majority vote to be elected to the position. If this is not a majority vote, we move on to the second nomination until you have a majority vote. They're just going to change it by saying the name. I don't know what's going on, sorry.
Can we make nominations yet?
No. Just wait. Okay. Wait.
Yes, we can?
Yes, we can.
I nominate Mike Wolfe to be board president.
I did, that's what made that noise, so I turned it off. I second the notion. There's no second, need it.
I make, well.
You need to, are there any more nominations? Oh, so we can close.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Do they do a roll call?
You have to do the roll call.
Need to get a vote.
Secretary.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Carries.
Congratulations. Good, she does it. When Connor comes, we do have to swear him over.
According to Board Policy 005, we'll continue with the seating of the board. Looking for nominations for the election of vice president, one-year term, being December 1st, 2015, to December 1st, 2016.
I nominate Connor Kurtz.
You can ask for any more nominations.
Is there any other nomination? For nominations to close?
You'll just get appointed when you're not here, because you can't turn it down. I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Second.
That's all I got.
First by Mr. Twardowski, seconded by Mr. Doty.
Nominations are closed.
Nominations are closed. Nominations are closed. Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Carries. Mr. Kurtz is elected vice president.
Continuing on, looking for appointment for board secretary, four-year term, being July 1st, actually, it's tonight. And continuing through June 30th of 2017. So I have a nomination.
Excuse me, that's only a three-year term. It's replacing Mr. Basil. Okay, thank you.
Is there a nomination for board secretary?
I nominate Richard Martino.
Any other nominations? If not, I need a second to close this.
A second to close it?
Who are you to make some close?
I'll make a motion to close.
In a second.
Nominations are closed. Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Martino is board secretary.
Okay, I'm pulling you.
Okay, we're looking for an appointment of an alternate board secretary, one-year term, being December 1st, 2015, to December 1st, 2016. Do I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Byts, which is interesting. Would you like to make that nomination?
Well, I'll accept that nomination, thank you.
Motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Doty to close, seconded by Mr. Raskin. Nominations are closed. Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts is alternate board secretary.
Thank you.
Moving along, we're looking for an appointment for Legislative Action Representative, one-year term, December 1st, 2013, to December 1st, 2016. Do I have any nominations? If not, I'd like to nominate Mr. Martino.
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Second. Motion to close by Ms. Twardowski, seconded by Mr. Doty. Okay, nominations are closed. Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Martino is the legislative rep.
The next one is appointment of P.A. School Board Association Representative, one-year term, from December 1st to December 1st of next year. Mrs. Byts, if you'd like to continue that role?
I would be honored.
I want to speak to somebody.
Anybody else?
Oh. Somebody has to nominate, or was that your nomination?
No, she currently has that position now.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
It doesn't mean someone else can't be nominated, though, right?
True, true, if somebody would like the opportunity to, maybe Mrs. Byts, maybe you would like to explain her position, what it does, and since we have two new board members here, it might not be familiar.
As the PASBA representative, that's our trade organization, I am one who kind of tries to filter through the areas of newsletters to learn and make sure that the board is aware of the most.
I'll pause. I'm going to pause for just a second, because we're going to swear Mr. Kurtz in. Mr. Kurtz, please raise your right hand. For me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
That I will discharge.
That I will discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Mr. Twardowski. Do you want to tell him he's vice president?
We're back to nominations.
Do you want to tell him he's vice president?
Tell him.
As per item, it's, Dean, as the school board representative. With PASBA, I try to filter through the communication. I try to filter through the communication with PASBA, make sure the board is apprised of the ones most relevant to our district and our situation here. And it'd be a great way for either of you to jump in, I highly encourage it, but I'll take it if anyone else wants to. Also try to make their meetings whenever possible in Harrisburg, and try to advocate for the district whenever I possibly can through our trade.
There's a legacy you left me, it's a bad microphone. Okay, again, do we have, is there a nomination for the appointment of P.A. School Board Association Representative?
I'd like to nominate Jeff Scott.
Are there any other nominations? Need a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Second.
Motion to close by Ms. Twardowski, seconded by Mrs. Byts.
Okay, nominations are closed. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Scott is PSBA rep.
Moving along, looking for nomination for appointment of Tax Collection Commission Representative, one-year term, December 1st, 15, through December 1st, 2016. Again, Mr. Raskin is the current representative. Would you like to continue in that role, or would you like to?
Somebody else wants to? I'm happy to pass it, but.
Well, again, as Mrs. Byts did, would you like to explain a little bit of the? So the Tax Collection Commission is the former Burks IT and TCC rolled together. Basically, they're the ones who are collecting all the taxes, their income tax, as well as, you know, non-collecting, tuition taxes, as well as business privileged taxes, et cetera, in the county and the city of Ray. And the crucial responsibility is to make sure that they're doing it as efficiently possible, and to make sure that we're collecting everything that is due us. Maybe about four times a year, you can certainly be more active in it, if you're going to own a board you can, but there is a representative of all the school districts, as well as the staff, the staffs, although some of the staffs have chosen to have their school board represent them at the meeting as well.
Thank you. I nominate Mr. Raskin to continue in the position.
I need to close nominations. Motion to close by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Doty.
Okay, nominations are closed. Mr. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin is the Burks TCC rep.
The next appointment is for the Burks Career and Technology Center. We don't need to perform any action on that since you're appointed, unless you would like to offer someone out opportunities. Would you like to continue in that role?
I mean, I'd be happy to continue if somebody really wants to.
I second that.
You don't, there's no action, we don't have to.
There's no action.
You're happy with it.
I mean, I don't want to.
No, we don't even have to.
I'd be happy to continue.
Thank you.
No action, all 17 and 18.
Yes, I offer up the opportunity to parachute out. The next appointment is for the Burks Career and Technology Center alternate representative, that'd be the same position that Mrs. Twardowski has, only if she can't make the meeting, this person would be in, wish she would take the place of that person. Currently, it's Mr. Doty. Mr. Doty, would you continue in that role?
Yep.
All right, no action, leave it there. Number 18, appointment of Burks County Intermediate Unit Representative, through June 30th of 2017. Currently, it's Mr. Raskin. We don't have to take action on this unless, okay, Mr. Raskin will continue to serve in that capacity. Thank you.
The next was a discussion.
Now, this is the appointment of vocational technical school operating committee member. This is for a five-year term, January 1st, 15, through December 31st, 2019. Mr. Kirchner is not, is no longer able.
Great.
Okay. Mr. Wolfe? Ms. Twardowski contacted the VOTAC school. It cannot be a board member, it has to be a member of the public.
So we're going to have to put this out for?
Yeah, we need to table this for tonight.
Okay.
Advertise for a member of the public to, to, to like this.
Now, from what I remember, when Mr. Kirchner came for the board, the board basically serves to oversee the financials of the Career and Technology Center, the money that they borrowed from, for their school construction. There's no planned construction going forward, I think they met very frequently.
Once a year.
Once a year, so it's not a, not a big commitment, so if there's someone from the public that would like to serve in that capacity.
I don't want to make any false promises here, but it's enticing, so this entices a potential volunteer, and they also do have a dinner, their one meeting here is a dinner and a trans social event, and I would prefer to mention that. Might make it a little bit more palatable.
Is it hosted by the students, as our meeting was?
I think.
The dinner?
Yeah.
That's phenomenal service, that, those kids can really cook.
Okay, do we need a motion to table this thing?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll second. Motion to table, by Mrs. Twardowski, seconded by Mr. Martino. Do you need a roll call? I don't think we need a roll call. Okay, looking for an appointment for Blazer Foundation Committee Representative, starting December 1st, 2015, to December 1st, 2016. Apparently, Mrs. Byts holds this position. Would you like to continue this?
Actually, I'd prefer if somebody else would step into that position.
Okay, I'm looking for nominations for this position, Mrs. Byts, maybe you could give a brief rundown of what's on, tell me.
I tried to make the foundation meetings when I could, and bring the news from the foundation to the board, and tried to advocate, communicate to the foundation the wishes and venues that the board would be willing to support with them. So just tried to be a liaison between the foundation and the board. I nominate Jeff Scott.
Since Jeff Scott has already been appointed to something, then I nominate Mr. Ocaso-Neal.
Drama on the first line. Are there any other nominations?
I guess you'll ask for a name.
Sort of vote by last name, roll call by last name. Mrs. Byts?
You just say who you want. Scott.
Mr. Doty?
Ocaso-Neal.
Mr. Kurtz?
Ocaso-Neal.
Mr. Martino?
Ocaso-Neal.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Ocaso-Neal.
Mr. Raskin?
Mr. Scott.
Well, we're on a roll, let's get with Mr. Ocaso-Neal, Mr. Ocaso-Neal over there, so.
Mr. Scott?
Ocaso-Neal.
Ms. Twardowski?
Ocaso-Neal.
Mr. Wolfe?
Ocaso-Neal.
Congratulations. It's a hard fought campaign.
Did we close that motion?
If we're going to push the chair, watch.
I just need a motion.
All right.
To close that, sorry.
All right, I need a motion to close.
To close that nomination.
For Blazer Foundation.
Blazer Foundation.
I need a motion to close.
That was a nomination?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I know, we're just, just somebody second it. Work with me. Thank you, work with me.
Do we have to vote again?
No.
All right, what's this next? The authorization for board officer to sign checks and continue to use.
It's a motion, yep.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for authorization of board officer to sign checks and continue to use of present signature stamp until a new one can be made, if necessary, optional if the officer. Okay, so I'm looking for.
So the present signature stamp would reflect Mr. Basil's name, then? Correct. Until we'll be stamping it with his name until. Correct. A new stamp is technically made, and what is the timeframe for that approximately? Very quickly. Tomorrow?
Couple days.
Couple days to get the stamp, but. Thank you. We put it in effect immediately.
If you're not mistaken, the only board officer that changed, actually, I mean, there were titles that changed, but Mr. Basil's no longer an officer, Mr. Wolfe is, so the other, other three people.
We have the paperwork.
We've got the paperwork here for the signature, so it'll be done tomorrow.
Will there be an alternate stamp also made for the alternate case? Is that how we go, or? No, not usually. Because if we had an alternate now, we wouldn't have to vote on that. If we had an alternate and the alternate was still seated. If they were still seated, yeah, but if they're voted out, we'd still be in the same boat, so. Okay, just trying to understand the process.
Okay, I need a motion. Need a motion, second.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Byts, seconded by Mr. Doty.
I'm just doing it, boys.
Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Raskin?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Twardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfe?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, pursuant to Policy 005, need to remind all the members that, five, I need your interest as far as the media appointments by the night.
By five days before the next.
Is that five business days, or five calendar days? I think it's five calendars, six to nine.
Yes.
Pursuant to Policy 005, need to remind all the members that five... I need your interest as far as the committee appointments by the night.
By five days before the next...
Is that five business days, or five calendar days? I think it's five calendar days, six to nine.
Yes.
Okay. So I need your interest in what committees you would like to serve on, and I'll choose the members that are sitting on that committee, as well as chairperson or co-chairperson, and it'll come back to the board for approval.
Do you want to read what...
Yeah, the committees are Finance Committee, Facilities Committee, Curriculum Instruction Committee, and Policy Review Committee. We'll have two ad hoc committees, one is Negotiation Committee and Transportation Committee the second.
Okay.
Is that it? Existing committees and committee appointments will function until the new committees and committee members have been designated and appointed by the board. I don't know if anybody... I don't have a policy reading schedule, Ms. Twardowski, I don't think you had, Facilities...
We don't have any practice yet.
Yeah, I don't think there was anything for scheduling for December anyway, so I won't apply. Comments from the board?
Have you already had any new Curriculum Description Committee meetings in the ten years? I'll see what I got, unless the committee brought it in. But I did have a comment, wanted to thank the board for indulging me in that experience. It was a great track today, I do a lot of checks for that, one of these curriculum meetings in the year. So thank you for...
Mr. Kurtz, did you say there is a Curriculum Committee scheduled before that date? Before the next...
I'm planning my whole morning in December, and we typically do it before the voting meeting, so...
Could we make that announcement tonight, or...
I'm on a little calendar, maybe there's a better time to do it, or I'm not sure. It'll be after college, if we do it at that point.
Okay, comments from the superintendent?
I just wanted to say it's nice to have a full board sitting around the table of returning members and new members, and let's get back to work.
All right, need a motion to adjourn the organization...
Comments from the public?
I'm sorry. Public comment. Seen none? Motion to adjourn?